All right, this time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order. And this time I ask you to join me in prayer. Almighty and ever-living God, source of all wisdom and understanding, be present with those who take counsel for the renewal and admission of your church in this city. Teach us in all things to seek first your honor and glory. Guide us to perceive what is right and grant us both the courage to pursue it and the grace to accomplish it through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. This time we're going to call upon the senior patrol leader of Troop 142, Hunter Dykes Woodson, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberity and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, especially some of the members of Troop 142 and their scoutmaster, John Guevara. Have I ever told you about the time that I saved Mr. Guevara's life? Or almost killed him? We're not sure. It depends on who tells the story. We want to welcome you all tonight. We're glad that you guys are here. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 26, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is or the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item three is consideration of possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Harlingen and the city of Brownsville for the sale of arbitrator in-car video systems to the city of Brownsville Police Department for $2,000 and declare the equipment as surplus property and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Mayor, Commissioners, these items are arbitrator audio/video systems that were in the old units that we used. We upgraded our video system last year with a brand-new watch guard system. These items are basically surplus junk for us, really. Brownsville still uses the arbitrator system and would like to purchase them from us. We came up with that $2,000 agreement, which is probably about what they're worth. Most of them are outdated for us. If you have any other questions, let me have to answer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the Chief Kestner? Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Glad that we can support our fellow, our community, our friends to the south in Brownsville. Item four, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cameron County Emergency Communications District to enable the city of Harlingen to participate in the early warning notification system, also known as the Emergency Alert System, for certain emergencies utilizing 911 emergency telephone number system in Cameron County and Vesta Alert. Chief.
Mayor, Commissioners, again, this is an update to a current agreement with the Cameron County 911 Emergency Communications District. Basically, it changes some of the language, updates it to Vista Alert, reverse 911, and also includes health hazards as part of the reasons we would do a reverse 911. I also have Ms. Sylvia Barajas is here on behalf of the Cameron County Emergency Communications District if you have any other questions.
Those district offices are located here and 911 district is located here in Harlingen off of Treasury Road.
Off of Camala Drive.
Boulevard, right.
Right.
Kind of behind, kind of.
Camelot.
Camelot. Kind of behind Lowe's.
Yes, sir.
Their very nice new facility. And so what does that, explain just a little bit more about what that system does, how that works, the benefit of our guests.
The 911 system.
And me too.
The 911 system is basically a county-wide system paid for by the county, and they provide it to the citizens of Harlingen as long as we agree to it. And there's also a reverse part of that in which if we need to send out alerts to certain areas of the city, we can send out alerts from the communication system out to the public. And it could be health hazards, it could be major incidents that occur in the city, any other type of messages like that.
Would that be like an Amber Alert come through on people's cellphones?
Those are typically done another way, but if we had a specific area that we're looking for, say, a lost child, we could do that to that specific area.
So this is something new? It's not a real, is this a new agreement?
No, we've had it already. It's just they've updated their system. We go through the county, we could do it ourselves, but then we'd have to pay for it ourselves.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five, consideration of possible action to enter into a contract with the Department of State Health Services Contract Number HHS 00037150005 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Governor, Mayor, Commissioners, this item before you is accepting or allowing a transfer contract to work on a grant. It's a grant that doesn't require a match and would allow us to purchase equipment, hire temporary staff to conduct mosquito surveillance, and also do a class on wastewater primarily after a hurricane and the effects of groundwater that's contaminated as well. If you want to look at page nine, there's some more details what would allow us to where the funding is going to.
What's the grant amount, Josh?
The total amount is $349,038.
$349,000?
It's going to be broken down into first sessions for $12,481, which is for providing the class for water and wastewater after a hurricane. The second one will be into $50,000 for buying equipment for what we call regular mosquito surveillance. The last one will be $286,557, thus more in-depth mosquito surveillance.
Okay. Is there any other, anybody have any questions? And is there a motion to approve the contract with the Department of State Health Services?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item six is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading and amending Chapter 18 of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing the correction of rental fees for the Rancho Park Pavilion.
Mayor, City Commission, this item here, we have requested as to amend the master fee ordinance. Back in July of 2018, the City Commission had approved the master fee ordinance, and inadvertently we had switched the numbers for the gazebo rental and the park pavilion rental. And so this item would be is to correct that. It would switch them back to the pavilions. Rental would be $100 for resident, $125 for non-resident, and the gazebo would be $75 for resident and $90 for non-resident.
Okay. Can we ask the city attorney to read the caption?
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending Exhibit A of Ordinance Number 1828 and amending Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and other services provided by the city of Harlingen, amending Chapter 36 Parks and Recreation, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Item seven, consideration of possible action regarding participation of the mayor and the city commissioners in the 2019 It's Time Texas Challenge pledge. Have you heard?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Commission, this is the third year that we participate in the It's Time Texas Challenge, and this year it's going to be an eight-week program statewide, and so it's going to run January 7th through March 3rd. If y'all recall, last year we won first place, and we were granted $1,800 for a grant fund for health-related purchase. So anything that's health-related, we'd be able to purchase and install in our parks. This challenge, I mean, the pledge for the mayor is 2,500 points, and the pledge for the City Commission is also 2,500 points. And just to let you all know, right now, we are ranked number one. Our points that we have so far is 2,585,100. And so the next city is Texas City with 1,401,000 points. So we've got about a million, million and a half lead, so.
All right. We're going to win. We're going to win again. This is, ladies and gentlemen, this is a kind of a fun competition, but it's a, has a very serious purpose, and that's to, you know, raise awareness throughout the state of Texas about the importance of everybody staying active and being physically fit. And so we know that a part of what, you know, industry and the healthcare community and local governments all understand that, you know, keeping their workforces physically fit and with a lot of activity is something that is good for business. It keeps people at work, keeps them out of the doctor's office and hospital, and it's really the right thing to do. So we're encouraging everybody to get out and to participate in a lot of these activities that we're doing. Over the course of the next three weekends, we've got some, a lot going on. We've got the marathon, we had a kid-fit event on Saturday. We also have the Harlingen Marathon, half marathon, and 5K will be run on Sunday, but Sunday will be the second Boston Qualifier Marathon in our city. The following weekend, the Jalapeno 100 Bicycle Race 50 Miles, and then also our Mayor's Walk on March 2nd. So hope everybody will come out and participate in all of those events. But right now, somebody's got to take a picture of me signing the pledge so that we can post it and get some more points, and then the city commissioners sign this one or do they sign it?
There's two. One for the mayor and one for the City Commissioner.
There's two? Where's the other?
We all know. We only have one?
Because it was combined.
All right, here's.
We can find that one.
All right. There you go. Pledge.
Sign the same one?
Yeah.
Pass it out. Everybody sign the same.
It doesn't say city manager, right? Just said.
Pardon that. I think we have another guest that walked in. I would like to recognize State District Judge David Sanchez. Welcome, Judge. Glad to have you here at our meeting tonight.
Right next to mine, Mike.
Of course. All right.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action to amend the rental contract for the Harlingen Cultural Arts Center. Have you heard?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. We put this item on the agenda to kind of standardize all our agreements that we have for rental facilities. And one thing that we, that we've made changes in as part of the packet is there was a restriction of providing alcohol at this facility, and so we struck that out. Everything else we're leaving in, and you can see in the red, we've added a couple of items because we allowed the serving of alcohol, is that they would have to hire, the leasing would have to hire a off-duty Harlingen police officer to be at the event. And in this particular facility, we would require that the leasing do lease the entire building, because we don't want mixed occupancy while alcohol's being served. And the last thing we have is on the refunds. We had 10 days, and so all our other agreements have 30 days, so we changed that as well.
I just want to point out one thing on number one, where we struck out the whole thing. Smoking is not permitted in any city building, so that would have to remain. That smoking is not permitted.
Right. Number two, smoking is prohibited in the building.
Okay.
And so the agreement before had they would allow them to smoke in the courtyard, but there's, the new ordinance wasn't, so we prohibited every, entire building.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the amendment to the rental contract?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution supporting relief from non-payment and disconnection policies for services provided by the Harlingen Water Works system for federal employees. Carlos?
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. The resolution before you mimics one that's already been approved by the Harlingen Water Works at their board meeting last January 30th. And again, like it stated on the agenda item, it is to provide relief to those affected federal employees that have been, or had experienced the furlough. The resolution allows for fees, late fees and disconnection fees to be waived. It's not the service itself, it's just giving them a 21-day period to be able to catch up with those, the fees that are being assessed. Staffs recommend you approve.
Would this also take a, go into effect if there's a subsequent furlough or is this just for the one that occurred?
We didn't take that into consideration, but I mean, it would be something that would be advisable, being that we're still within the same fiscal year, so.
Go ahead, Mayor. You had it.
Well, I was just going to say, why don't we, I would recommend that we pass it to be applicable to any subsequent furlough in 2019.
When this was being discussed, I spoke with Dan, and I said, we need to make sure just in case this happens again, we should have something. So I would make that recommendation as part of my motion.
Okay. So the resolution is to approve it, but to make it, we would approve it for any subsequent furloughs in 2019?
As a standing resolution.
Yeah. Okay.
I second that.
We have a motion, second. Any other, any other discussion? And so for those federal employees that are affected, that have water service with the Harlingen Water Works, we would waive these fees and make it easier on them because they're not getting a regular paycheck during this period of time. All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is consideration of possible action to approve a resolution calling and ordering the May 4th, 2019, city of Harlingen general election to elect one member of the position of mayor-at-large and two members of the position of city commissioner of District 1 and District 2, and any other matters related to the election.
Exactly what you said, Mayor. This is a standard resolution calling the election for May the 4th, 2019, to fill the position of mayor-at-large and two commissioners, one for District 1 and one for District 2, designating the voting precincts, designating the polling places. Early voting will be held in this building, in this meeting room. We are having a joint election with the school, so early voting will be conducted in this room for the city and the school, starting on April 22nd and ending on April 30th, from 8 to 5, with the exception of two days, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The school will be calling their election on February the 12th. So once they've approved that, then what follows is the interlocal agreement, which will be placed on the city commission agenda, the next city commission agenda. And everything starts from there, Mayor. We start preparing for everything.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calling for the fourth?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 11 is to consider, take possible action to postpone the regular city commission meeting of March 6th due to the Harlingen Assembly to date the Capitol.
Mayor, Commissioners, we're going to be in Austin, March 5th, all day, coming back on the 6th. Just wanted to find out if you gentlemen wanted to move the meeting day to possibly the 7th, on the Thursday, to give everybody enough time to get back, or if everybody's fine with getting back on time, we can leave it on the 6th.
I suggest we move it to the 7th.
We're pushing a day.
One day.
Yeah. I understand we won't make it back, because we don't leave until about 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay. And the 7th gives staff enough time to prepare the next agenda for the following meeting.
Okay.
I would recommend the 7th.
I make the motion that we postpone our meeting till the 7th.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of possible action to appropriately recognize the significant contributions made in the city of Harlingen by Herb Kellerher and Southwest Airlines. So as most of you know, Herb Kellerher passed away last month, the founder of Southwest Airlines, and Commissioner Mesmar very appropriately suggested that we do some kind of recognition in honor of Mr. Kellerher. You know, a lot of people don't realize this, but Harlingen was the fourth destination city for Southwest Airlines, and is now, Southwest Airlines is now the busiest airline in the United States, more flights, serving more passengers than any other airline. And so Herb Kellerher was a friend to the city of Harlingen, and really was a personal friend to many people within this community who got to know him when he brought Southwest to the city of Harlingen, and which has contributed significantly to the economic development of our region. So it seems appropriate that we do something. And there are some suggestions that Marv Easterly has, or Airport Director, has made, including an announcement in the Dallas newspaper expressing condolences and thanking Herb for believing in Harlingen, a letter of condolence from the mayor to Southwest employees, Herb Kellerher Day, naming a city park after Herb, a plaque with dedication at Valley International Airport, or charitable donation, Herb's honor. And I circulated this, these suggestions that Herb made to some of the people who were here when Southwest Airlines came to Harlingen back in the early 70s, and they, some of them said, let's do them all. So what I would suggest maybe is that we consider these ideas, that we just authorize the city manager to do something appropriate, which might be more than one of these suggestions within what he thinks is appropriate, and let, but to do something. And instead of us trying to figure out which thing, I think some of these things might take a little research, figure out how much they're going to cost, and kind of give him the authority to move forward on doing some things that would appropriately honor Mr. Kellerher and Southwest Airlines.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe something at the convention center, like maybe a room or one of the rooms or one of the ballrooms. Might be fitting things, brand new to the city, and.
So are you looking for a vote, a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to authorize our city manager, Dan Serna, to look at the six ideas presented and to, using his discretion, to go forth on it.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? And it might be something else too, like Commissioner Uribe suggested, it might be something he feels like he needs to bring back, and I think we've got to do something pretty quickly, and then if there's some other things that feels like he needs to bring back, we can do that. All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. This time we have a number of executive session items that I'm going to read off, so please bear with me. Item 13 is an executive closed session attorney consultation pursuant to Section 552.071 Texas Government Code for legal advice and counsel in connection with prior advance to Texas State Technical College of Real Property located in the northeast portion of the state highway loop 499, at Harlingen pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 552.072 and 551.071, to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property of deliberation in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the position of the city of Harlingen person regarding acquisition of real property. Pursuant to Item C, D, and E will be pursuant to Chapter 551, Sections 551.087, 551.071, and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding commercial and financial information from a business prospect with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations, and order discussed or deliberate financial or other incentives with the business prospects known as Project Dream, Project Development, and ULA to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move into the conference room and consult with our attorney regarding these items, and there could be action when we return under items 14 and 15. So thank you. We're out of executive session at 6:38. Pass item 14, we're going to go, we do want to, is there a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the?
Agreements.
Agreements regarding ULA as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. So no, is there any citizen communication?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Sisson.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and where you live and.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Irvin Sisson. I live at the Pine subdivision, recently annexed out west of Business 83, and my mission here tonight is to talk about the roads. Mayor Boswell and I had a meeting 10 years ago, and the mayor is the only one in Cameron County to sign a paper saying that these roads were private. Now, I think they've been private for 50 years, and the people out there are tired of fixing the potholes. And I'm here tonight to ask the mayor and Dan Serna, the city engineer, for a meeting. Of course, what I've got, you don't have time to listen to all this, but I want to talk about the roads. talk about the roads. And you were the one that, you and Gabe Rodriguez, I believe was, as Assistant City Manager at the time, he was at the meeting with you, and I got a letter from him that said that they were private roads. We've been private for 50 years out there. People are upset. We're paying taxes since we've been annexed into the city of Harlingen, and we've seen that you repair a lot of other roads, and we've only got about 400 feet of potholes, and your city trucks go through there twice a day. Now, I can't blame those potholes on the trucks, but they use that road. It's got the potholes in it. So, Mayor, I'm here tonight to ask you to set up a meeting with me and one other fellow from the subdivision, and we'll talk about these roads. Will you interrupt in a minute that you agree to a meeting? Now, I'm retired, and you're busy. I know that. But I expect a meeting within the next few days.
So we can talk about it after, when we finish, we'll talk about how we can set that up.
Okay. I've got all kinds of information on the roads, and I've been for 25 years. And I was asking the lady, I says, has Mayor Boswell been mayor for 25 years? I think so. You've been mayor since I've been here.
Not that long.
Well, I thank you, and Mr. Serna's the only one I recognize.
Carlos will get your information so that we can record.
Yeah.
You'll get your
No, I won't share my information with the mayor.
You know, every 10 years, I'm happy to be with you. All right.
My information on me?
Okay. Nothing else, so that concludes our meeting, and ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you.